You're on the record?
Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May 27, 2020. The time is 6:00 PM. And the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County Commissioners, is in session for our public hearing, land use public hearing. We have all three commissioners with us this evening. Also in the room with us, we have?
Brent Danielson.
Great. Okay, welcome, everyone. We are remote here, so we don't have anyone physically in the room. They'll be calling in. So a little bit different protocols for this evening's hearing. Any changes to this agenda before we get going?
No, they're not.
Okay, great. All right, I don't have to remind everybody to silence their cell phones or sign up in the back for testimony. All right, let's get going then. We're gonna start with an administrative item that we have, and this is on Dry Creek Ranch subdivision, number four final plat, 201-601-258-S. And we have Samuel here to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Yeah, this project, 2016-01258, is a final plat for Dry Creek Ranch, number four subdivision. This subdivision final plat meets the regulations found in the Ada County Code and Idaho State Code, as well as satisfying all the conditions of approval from the preliminary plat approved on February 21, 2017. Dry Creek Ranch subdivision number four consists of 35 residential lots and seven common lots. The property contains 11.91 acres and is located at the intersection of North Almond Avenue.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, can you hear him?
I'm having a hard time.
Can you speak up a little bit?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Laciando, can you hear me? Okay.
Just really project your voice.
Okay. So, I guess I'll start from the top. The Dry Creek Ranch subdivision, number four, final plat meets the regulations found in Ada County Code and Idaho State Code, as well as satisfying all the conditions of approval from the preliminary plat approved on February 21, 2017. Dry Creek Ranch sub number four consists of 35 residential lots and seven common lots. The property contains 11.91 acres and is located at the intersection of North Almond Avenue and West Saddle Lake Drive in Section 36, Township 5 North, Range 1 East. Phases 1, 2, and 3 of the Dry Creek Ranch subdivision have already been platted and consist of 224 residential lots and 19 common lots. This subdivision complies with the dimensional standards of the corresponding land use districts in the Dry Creek Ranch planned community. At this time, staff recommends approval of the final plat as shown in the file findings and conclusions of law. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Samuel. Since this is not an open public hearing, there's no one signed to testify in this, so it'll just open for board discussion. Any questions?
I had one. In reading through the findings, it mentioned Eagle Fire did sign off and test their fire pump system, and it says it'll retest if needed. How do they determine if it's needed?
That's a good question. Jason, lifeline.
Did you understand the question?
Yes.
Phone a friend.
That's a good question, yeah. Madam Chair, commissioners, too late, right?
I think for the fire, the fire districts are required to do regular testing of their systems. And so my understanding is that that's an "as needed" for their retesting and ensuring that it continues.
So on whatever schedule they have, they'll decide if they think they need to go out and retest it?
Correct, yeah. It wasn't an issue necessarily of the system.
Okay.
Because the system passes, but they do their regular maintenance.
It's just the way it was written. They will retest if needed. And I'm like, and what's that trigger event? I know Commissioner Laciando is very concerned about fire and things like that, so.
Any questions that you have, Commissioner Laciando?
No, that sounds great.
Okay. All right, then. I'll need a motion. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Laciando.
I move to approve application number 201-601-258-S and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Second?
If we have motion of second, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. We're gonna take up unfinished business now, and I will need a motion, Commissioner.
I have that. Madam Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
There we go. Okay, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right. So we have before us 201-602-053-CU-PR-TE, Cougar Gabriel, Gabriela, Gabriella, I'm not sure. Gabrielle. And this is to be tabled, and so I'll need a motion to table this item. Commissioner Laciando, do you want to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I move to table the aforementioned item for a future date.
To 6/10/20.
Oh, excuse me, to June 10, 2020.
Second?
All right, we have motion of second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have project 202-000-202-VAC, By Right LLC. And we have staff member Brett Danielson to present to us. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I needed to open the public hearing on 202-000-202-VAC By Right. Now the public hearing is officially open.
Project number 2020-00202-VAC is a vacation of plat note number six from the Alta View subdivision plat. The property contains approximately 29.92 acres and is located at the northeast corner of McDermott Road and Victory Road. The applicant is requesting to vacate plat note number six from the Alta View subdivision plat in order to allow for the property to be a buildable lot. Plat note number six states, Lot 9, Block 1, is a dedicated open space lot and shall be restricted from development until both the following conditions of approval have been met. One, the subject property has received development approval for zoning ordinance map amendment to A, a commercial industrial district, or B, a residential or rural district that allows a minimum lot size of less than or equal to five acres; and two, urban services are available to the proposed development. This means that Lot 9, Block 1, of the Alta View subdivision cannot become a buildable lot until the property is rezoned to a district that allows for a minimum lot size of less than or equal to five acres and municipal water and sewer is available to the proposed development. The property has met one of those provisions, and that was rezoned to the rural-urban transition district when the city of Meridian expanded their area of city impact to include the subject property. The outstanding provision is the ability to hook up to municipal water and sewer, which is a significant distance away. Alta View subdivision was developed in 2006 as a non-farm subdivision consisting of 38.38 acres with seven residential lots and two common lots and an open space lot. Non-farm subdivisions allowed rural property owner to develop 25% of their land into large lot residences, with the remaining 75% of the land being devoted to dedicated open space. Non-farm subdivision provisions were updated over time between 1989 until the provisions for non-farm subdivisions were repealed in 2008. Thus, the provisions for the redevelopment of an open space lot in a non-farm subdivision is different for a subdivision that was entitled in 1995 than for one that was entitled in 2006. The intent of the ordinance for Alta View subdivision, when the subdivision was entitled in 2006, was that the open space lot cannot be developed until municipal water and sewer were available to the property. The initial property owner took the risk when developing the subdivision that the dedicated open space lot would need to remain as open space, and subsequent property owners should have been aware of this based upon the plat note on the plat. It's not.
Can I just pause you just for a moment? We do have the applicant on the bridge, correct?
Correct.
I should have guessed, I guess I should have said hello, just to make sure.
I spoke to them. They were the first ones in the meeting.
Okay, all right. I'm just going to make sure that you're there. Brian, Nicole, can you hear me? Okay.
Brian, are you there?
Brian, can you hear us in the boardroom?
Brian, I just want to make sure that you can hear Brent with his presentation.
We've unmuted you here. You might be muted on your own computer. I don't know. Or we've lost you entirely.
Who's there?
We see you, we just don't hear you.
Go check in, Brian. See if you can hear us.
I was trying to bring it up, but it's kind of being...
It looks like he's muted. Brian, if you can hear us, can you unmute on your end?
Okay.
Hi, Brian. Can you hear us now? You're still muted.
You're muted in your WebEx system.
Okay, now we should be able to hear you.
Okay.
There we go.
Yes.
We can hear you now. So I wanted Brett to just pause. I wanted to make sure that you could hear his presentation.
Yes, I've been listening to his presentation.
Okay, fabulous. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue then.
I'm not getting anything. The screen's just blank.
Oh. We're gonna, we're gonna, just so the folks on WebEx, we're gonna try and share the screen so that you can see what's being presented in the room here.
This Info 2 only shows up here. It's not showing up.
Okay.
So just go ahead and stop sharing, and then share content. Where is the, where is it at? Is it, is it, did you do it through the internet?
I did, yeah, right here.
Okay. So do you want to share from there?
Okay.
Yep, now you're good.
Awesome.
We're good? Okay, all right, Brett.
So staff recommends denial of this application to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
I don't think so.
Commissioner Laciando, any questions for staff at this time?
No, this time.
Okay, then it's the applicant's turn, and Mr. McCall, you'll have up to 15 minutes to present your project to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Laciando and Commissioner Malroy. I represent By Right, and we have had an opportunity to review the staff report and to review the proposed findings, facts, and conclusions of law. I should note that we agree with everything in the staff report, and we agree with everything in the findings, facts, conclusions of law, with the sole exception of the conclusion. And to address why it is that we don't think the relevant section of the Ada County Code requires a conclusion that the petition to vacate is not the right conclusion. I'm just gonna take a moment to go through the applicable law. It's very short, as you probably all know, Ada County Code 8.6.6 is the section of the governance vacation of plats or partial vacation. The language of it is as follows. An applicant or owner may petition the board for total or partial vacation of a recorded subdivision plat, including easements. Vacations shall be processed in accordance with the regulations set forth in Idaho Code 50-1306A. So the Ada County Code provision I just read in its entirety, then it directs you to how to process an application that may be made. And it directs you to that section of the Idaho Code 50-1306A. It's not quite so short, but I can let you know basically what it says. In the first section, it says that if you want to vacate a plat or vacate a portion of the plat, you must petition to city council if it's in the city and county commissioners if it's in the county. The second part is that you must provide the appropriate notification, which is essentially notifying by registered mail and posting the property. Registered mail goes to all property owners within 300 feet. In addition to posting the property, there's a requirement that it be published. And, excuse me. The staff has acknowledged that everything has been done procedurally correct. The final and operative section of Idaho Code 50-130A is as follows. When the procedures set forth herein have been fulfilled, the city council slash county commissioners may grant the request to vacate with such restrictions as they deem necessary in the public interest. So in other words, what we have, just from a pure legal analysis, is property owner and interested person can petition under the Ada County Code, and then if you follow the procedures under the Idaho Code, by making the petition to the appropriate body and making the appropriate notification, then it falls to the operative section that says you can deny it, you can grant it outright, you can grant it with conditions. So the staff's conclusion was that this application does not... I want to make sure I get it correctly. It states that the application has been in full compliance with the Ada County Code section and the procedural requirements of Idaho Code 50-1306A. But then it recommends denial because of non-compliance with that section. In this staff, trying to the fact conclusions of law, I'd like to direct everybody's attention to subsection H, which I think is on page four.
H is on page three at the bottom.
Yes, thank you. And then, starting at the bottom, this is what I think staff is recommending that you adopt as your findings. Paragraph one says, "Board finds section 8-6-6 of the Ada County Code is applicable if the applicant is petitioning for the board to vacate plat note six from the Alta View subdivision." It goes on and then recites what plat note six is, and I think Mr. Danielson covered that. It basically, on the plaque, is this note that says, "No further development." And I'm summarizing, but no further development can occur until two conditions have been met. The first condition has been met when the property was rezoned from an Ada County zone of R-R to an Ada County zone of R-U-T. The second condition is that the property must have municipal services brought to it for any further development. And on the bottom of that, page four, it says, "The board finds that the petition does not comply with section 8-6-6 of the Ada County Code." And then goes on, on page four, to recite what the petition has done successfully and perhaps how the staff gets to its conclusion that we haven't been in compliance with 8-6-6. Over on that page, the first paragraph in italics is that the board finds that the petition has been processed in accordance with the regulations set forth in 50-1306A. And that's the Idaho Code setting forth that you must file your petition with the appropriate board. You must publish, and then the job is up to the council, or in this case, the county commissioners, to grant, deny, or grant with conditions. The second paragraph in italics, so we're in complete agreement with that finding. The second paragraph is that you find that the Alta View subdivision was approved, I think it was in March of '08, and that the subdivision consisted of seven approximately one-acre lots. I don't know, Brent, if you can show on the screen the aerial or the plat map. In addition to the seven one-acre lots is the lot in question here, which was where it says site, and that's a 30-acre, 29.89, I think, open space lot. So we're obviously in agreement with the second finding in italics. The third one is that the board finds that the vacation is to remove plat note six from the plat in order to build a single-family dwelling on Lot 9, Block 1. And that, we are also in agreement with that. We filed our petition to vacate that plat and submitted with it, and it'll be in your packet, I'm sure, the detailed letter setting forth the circumstance under which we would like to have that plat note vacated. So everything in that... Well, everything in that paragraph we agree with, but the pertinent part of the paragraph is the last section, which says, "Property has satisfied one of the conditions." That the property was rezoned to a rural-urban transition district when the city of Meridian expanded their area of impact in 2008. The R-U-T district allows for a minimum lot size of five acres. The outstanding condition is that municipal water and sewer are not available to the property. We're all in agreement with that. What we are seeking here is to remove that restriction, the restriction that requires municipal services to be brought to the property, and I'll get to that in a moment. The fourth paragraph in italics is quite lengthy. I'm definitely not going to read it, but the staff goes through the history of non-farm subdivisions ordinances in Ada County, and we are in complete agreement with that. The relevant part from our perspective is that the most recent non-farm subdivision ordinance in which this property was brought in was repealed. And so one of the arguments that we have made in our detailed letter is the non-farm subdivision code really doesn't apply anymore. The very last part of this paragraph, I think staff's done an excellent job in this regard in reviewing it. It says, "These early non-farm subdivisions did not have the provision that the open space had to hook up to municipal water and sewer in order to be redeveloped. Later ordinance amendments added the provision that the open space in a non-farm subdivision could not be redeveloped until municipal water and services are available." We agree with that as well. We're kind of, when this property was platted under the non-farm subdivision ordinance in 2008, at that time, the provision that you had to wait for water and sewer to come before you did any further development, that was in place, and we recognize that. Having gone through that page from top to bottom and agreeing with it in its entirety, well, there's one more provision on the top of page five, and I think Mr. Danielson mentioned this. "The board finds that the intent of the ordinance, when Alta View subdivision was entitled in 2006," I think that's entitled, I think it was 2008, "was that the open space lot could not be developed until municipal water and sewer were available to the property." So staff is saying that was the intent back then, and we agree with the intent, too. But I don't think it necessarily follows that the conclusion is that the applicant, in this case, By Right, has not complied with the Ada County Code 8-6-6 or that the effect of the Ada County Code, which is just to say that you can apply for a petition to vacate, and that you must follow the procedures of the Idaho Code section that we've referred to. That's all that that says. We have applied, we've conformed with the procedures. They contested in that regard. But because we haven't met this provision, staff, I think, is recommending denial because that provision is still there. Well, that's the point.
Mr. McCall, I just want to point out that you have two minutes left.
Okay, then I'll talk slower and cover way less. I might just be able to wrap this up in this sense. That Code section does not say that you shall approve if it's in compliance with old existing law or you shall deny it if it's not in compliance. It just says you can apply and then follow Code section, and the Idaho Code section says that you may grant the petition with conditions. We have proposed conditions. We have them in writing, and we've controlled. One building permit would be permitted now. And of course, that's not up to them, but that's our commitment to them. Then we've got to go through the building department. The second one is as follows. "No further development will be seven years from the effective date of this agreement. Any future development shall be then four acres each." So we are suggesting and hoping and requesting that you grant the petition subject to these conditions and any other conditions that the board may deem appropriate. At the end of the day, what these property owners have out there right now is no development on this open space lot at all. If this petition is granted, they will, they will be contractually, we will be contractually obligated to them, no further development until municipal services are there. And if and when municipal services get there or seven years get there, any future development would be restricted to four-acre lots and probably be five-acre lots. So that's about seven-acre lots. The before picture...
Your time is up. Could you wrap it up, please?
If I can wrap it up in 30 seconds, Madam Chair?
Go for it.
The before condition here for determination, 30 lots, 40 lots, 90 lots, we're saying we will limit it to basically seven lots. If you divide five acres into 29 acres.
Any questions for the applicant at this time?
Sure, Madam Chair. So you're acknowledging that the original condition was legitimate. So you're not only really asking for a vacancy, you're asking for a repeal of the initial restriction
That's what I got out of it.
on that lot.
Yes, that's right.
And I understand that. I don't know if strike that restriction through the vacancy application process. So for me, I think I would need some further insight from our legal department to find out if this is even the correct vehicle to make the request that you're making. the request that you're making, because it's beyond just a vacancy. It's a, it's a dismissal or a restriction, a removal of, of a pre-existing condition on that lot.
Repeal. So Jason, can you address this, please? Yes?
So we do have, uh, an attorney is in the meeting, um, if you'd like to call for a recess and have a call with legal. That is...
Jason, I can't hear you.
Who do we have with us? Which venue? Okay, we have, we have Lorna with us, and if we want to take a recess, we could get on the phone with her to discuss whether this is in fact the correct venue, because at the end of the argument, that's exactly what I got out of this, was you're asking for a repeal. The, the non, the non-farm was repealed, so you're asking us to, to consider the repeal of the non-farm.
A removal of pre-existing conditions, as I see it, yeah.
So is that...
That's essentially correct. We're, we're asking to have that plat note vacated, and we did go to a pre-act meeting, and we got an indication that this was the appropriate procedure to, to follow.
Okay. Commissioner LaGioondo, what's your desire?
Well, I mean, I understand what the, the applicant is trying to get at here, but ultimatum annex is you'll certainly have that opportunity to develop under City of Meridian code, and we're sort of splitting the baby on whether we vacate now or that happens then, because they're the ones who are going to have to bring municipal services to the property at the end of the day. So I, I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm, I'm not inclined to support this vacation.
Could you tell us, Mr. McCall, my understanding was that municipal sewer water is still about two miles out? Is that correct?
That's correct, and the Development Services at Meridian have said that they have no ex, they don't expect the services to get there ever. There's no, there's no plans to bring them that, that distance. This property is right next to, it borders on Canyon County.
Yeah. Go ahead.
When was the, when was the original agreement? Jason, do you, or, I'm sorry. When was the original agreement that, in other words, when does the seven-year trigger come into play? That at, at this time, or is that something new?
Sounded like it would...
The, the seven-year trigger was something new that Mr. McCall... Okay, that's not in this original agreement. That's something they're offering as a condition, okay, down the road.
In, in order to get approval from the lot owners out there, we agreed that there would be only one building permit now, and they were okay with us coming to the county, of course you could deny it, in seven years, and seeking further subdivision, but only in the four acre lots, as opposed to the high density that you would get from...
But based on, Mr. McCall, based on your last information, Meridian...
That's absolutely my understanding.
And that's, and that's why you're, the compromise you're offering is larger lots that are going to require less water, utilizing a well system of some kind, yeah.
Right, and it's consistent with the property to the north, south, east, and west. This, this is all basically residential add property. We, we would just like to have one building permit, and I suppose, my client would kick me, but I suppose that more restrictive condition could be placed on by the, for the county commissioners, that one building permit, and that's it.
What, you, do you have a size of building in mind?
Yes, a house.
Okay.
Tonight on this?
Madam Chair, no.
Okay, so Kevin Dominique did not call in. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, we're going to go ahead then, and I'm going to take a head nod on whether we want to go ahead and recess for five, 10 minutes and get our, our legal on the, on the phone, just to clarify.
So, Madam Chair, it would be an executive session.
Yeah, head.
I'm, I'm, I'm interested to know if this is the right mechanism for this.
Okay, I am as well, so we've got, we've got to, I'm going to go ahead then and make the motion to go into executive session, and we're going to call Brian back. Mr. McCall will call you back.
Okay.
All right.
He'll just stand in line.
I think he'll stay in line, because calling me back might be problematic.
Okay. So you can take care of that on your end?
Uh, so we're going to have to go into a separate room.
Oh, okay, we'll move, we'll move then. Okay. Can't block him out. Okay.
No.
We can't hear you.
Okay, go ahead. There we go.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Thank you for your patience. We appreciate that. We're back on the record on project number 202-000202-VAC by Wright LLC. And we just recessed coming out of executive to discuss with our legal staff the proper mechanism for this. Commissioner Malloy, would you care to explain that?
Okay, I will. Where, this is where I'm at. I understand the original condition that was placed on this, the note. And I understand you're seeking to have that vacated. I would be inclined to deny that just summarily. However, you can go through the process of seeking to re-subdivide this property separately off of there. And that notation could be vacated at that time. And the reason that I would feel that's the right process is it gives public notice that there is a change being made in the way that that property was originally subdivided. And I feel like that's an important step, is to notice the public, the neighbors, and the surrounding areas, that there's going to be a change in the way that this particular parcel is being utilized.
Based on that direction, since we have no further testimony to hear this evening, I'm going to close the public hearing so the board can continue to deliberate. Commissioner LaGioe, would you care to weigh in?
Sorry, I have to unmute myself again. So I'm thinking in a similar vein. Mr. McCall, I understand that you have some desires for this property, but we really have an obligation to make sure that the public has the opportunity to understand and weigh in when any changes are potentially going to be made. So I also would be inclined to support the staff's recommendation at this point and encourage you to look at another route.
I would be in total agreeance with both Commissioner LaGioe and Commissioner Malloy and feel that that's the better route to go. And would also go along with denying this vacating of the plat note at this point and sending you in a different direction to get what you're still asking for, but with engaging the public in that process. Any further discussion or deliberation? I'll go ahead and take a motion then.
Okay, Madam Chair. I would move to deny application number 202-000202-VAC and uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny based on the finding of fact and conclusions of law contained in the report.
So, Madam Chair, on my hand.
Yeah, Jason.
This didn't go to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the staff's recommendation. But I think based on your deliberation and your comments, staff would like to revise the findings to reflect your decision.
Okay.
So you're okay with the denial, but we ask that it be tabled until the June 10th meeting so that we can revise the findings to reflect your deliberation and decision.
Okay. Would you care to modify your motion?
I will do my best to modify that, Madam Chair. I move to table project 202-000202-VAC to, Jason, when did you say?
June 10th.
To June 10th so that we may adjust the findings of facts in that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
We do.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you for your time, Mr. McCall. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. All right, next we're going to take up, we're going to open the public hearing on new business here on project number 2006-00071-PR-S-DAM in print and M- MSP, Johnson Tucker. And we have Diana here this evening to present this to us. And we want to make sure that the applicant, Tucker Johnson, is on the phone with us or on the video with us.
Yes, I am.
Great, okay. I'll go ahead and please let me know if you can't hear our staff. If you can't hear Diana, let us know and we'll have her speak up. Go ahead, Diana.
So this application is actually for a preliminary plot.
You need to share your screen.
Okay.
No, no. You're okay.
Okay.
Go ahead and open it back up. Here, tell me to do it. Let me drive.
I'll talk while you do that. So this is an application for a preliminary plot, a private road. There will be 106 buildable lots, 74-plex styled lots. So the structures will actually, the structures on the northern portion will actually be on individual lots, but they will be connected. So they will have individual owners on that part. This development was approved in 2006 as a planned unit development. This is a phase that they are just coming forward with. They've completed a lot of the other phases. It does comply with Boise's comp plan. And they'll have townhouses, patio homes, and other forms of attached housing. They also will have some muse housing, which will be, they will face the park-like area in the middle of that subdivision, and they will have garage, alley-loaded garages. They did submit a master site plan. Let me go this way. Okay, so these are the townhomes. They are proposing a pool, a community pool for this area. For this, it's actually going to be Hazelwood number 18, Hazelwood Village. This is the park-like area that they have towards the southern portion of Hazelwood that's already been constructed. So the front of the houses are facing the green grass. This is what the, basically the four lots with four houses that are connected. This is the pinwheel elevations. I'll go back to the site. They are on Lake Hazel and Five Mile. They have had some multifamily here. This portion is not considered typically multifamily because each lot is owned separately. There is a new development to the east, which is going to be commercial. And then they actually will come in at a later date to develop the rest of this. The, sorry. So this is Hazelwood Village, and they have several different types of housing types. So this is being recommended approval by staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
This is the one close to McDonald's.
Yep. Correct. Yes. Any questions, Commissioner LaGioe?
No, I just keep getting confused when you say Diana. But, you know, you got the right one in the room over there.
All right. We'll go ahead then and we'll move to the applicant. Mr. Johnson, are you with us?
Yes, good evening. Can you see me?
We can see you now, yes. You'll have 15 minutes to present, up to 15 minutes. So go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. Some unique circumstances. However, after 28 years of being a local developer, was born and raised in the business, while I was a judge originally, and decided that it wasn't painful enough to be a judge dealing with the same challenging people in society all the time, so decided to be a developer. So each avenue has its own challenges, but I appreciate the opportunity before you tonight. The application before you is the 18th phase of an ongoing project. As staff member Diana indicated, the plat was approved, originally approved in 2006. Since that time, we've survived a recession of significant magnitude and continued with the original vision of Hazelwood Village, to build a very unique neighborhood that is vibrant, very customized, a lot of amenities that combine into a great tapestry, if you will, lots of different threads that combine to make a great tapestry. I'll walk you through some of the key points here. I'll just pull up my own PowerPoint here and just walk you through that here, if I can figure out technology here. All right, so this actually is the entrance to the neighborhood off of Lake Hazel Road to Almira. And so the actual location that we're talking about happens to be off to just this side here.
So Mr. Johnson, I think you need to push, you need to hit share.
Your screen share.
Screen share.
Okay, let me learn technology here then.
It's down at the bottom. If you scroll.
Let me switch back to this. Yeah, oh, the arrow, content share.
There you go.
Screen.
There you are.
That works.
She did teach me that the other day and I forgot. Thank you.
Now we got you.
All right, thank you very much. So this is the entrance to Hazelwood Village off of Lake Hazel Road. The street is called Almira. There's a roundabout right here that you can see that we can use as a reference point. So the application that we're working on is in this general vicinity over here. She's already indicated, staff already indicated, we're at the intersection of Lake Hazel and Five Mile, Boise City Conference of Plan. Doesn't, this intersection is kind of a community activity center, meaning higher intensity uses, commercial, office, services, that type of thing in this general area. Lake Hazel Road is designed eventually to connect from Nampa all the way to Ismen interchange. And so it'll eventually be a larger corridor road, much like Overland or such. Again, the activity center, this is zoom in on this particular area. This is currently being developed as a mixed use, some commercial as well as some townhouse, four-plex type product in this area, which Public Homes is constructing. The original Hazelwood Village, this is a color rendering of that, where, let me go back to this previous picture. So we've never owned the gas station here or the pieces behind it, which is now a strip mall of sorts. It's a Zamzow's, and then it's expanding to this direction towards the Cunningham Lateral, which is right here on our west or east boundary of this Phase 18. This is the original concept. We have different lot types and housing types within here. The majority of the homes, we call traditional homes, they're on smaller lots. The density here is about five units per acre in this particular colored section. So these alley, these traditional lots, or the beige color, were front-loaded, front-loaded garages. And then there are lots that are more of this white color in different locations that are served by an alley. The front door faces onto a public street. And then the different type of product here that we call homes, alley homes facing on a muse, where the front of the house faces onto a park, as staff has already pointed out. So this has evolved. This is actually our fourth preliminary plat because as market conditions change and more livability issues, we're trying to create a very fine neighborhood. And this is a key component to this Phase 18. Our original plat approval, and PUD approval back in 2016, called out this area to be at least 50% in multifamily attached product, with a target density of somewhere between eight and 12 units per acre. This was originally, and currently is still zoned C2, but because it doesn't have frontage on Lake Hazel Road and very limited, Five Mile Road, South Five Mile Road here, will not go, is not earmarked to go much more than a mile south. That's what's, we'll never have the traffic count and the eyeballs. Our plan someday is to come back with a similar design should this prove to be successful, as we believe it will be, and expand this concept that we're doing here in this area, reasonably from a C2 to, back to a PUD R8. The area that we are focused on here this evening is this area here in the red circle. This is some of the flavor as you walk, as you come into the neighborhood, a very mature landscaping because it has been over 12 years or more, hanging baskets on light poles, attention to detail and landscaping. And this is the plat itself, a color rendering, conceptual illustration of Phase 18. I'll walk you through the different pieces and parts of it. One of the compelling issues that we're focused on here is recognize there's a need for quality housing in the valley that is attainable for individuals and families. And so we've teamed up with one of our key builders in the 600 homes that have already been built in Hazelwood Village, Trisidia Homes, and John Hastings, its owner and president, who may testify later, to identify a product type that would be both attainable as well as very attractive and merge well as part of the overall Hazelwood Village umbrella. I'll walk through the different pieces and parts of that. So some of the, some of the townhomes, the townhomes are all this more of a beige color. And then up in this section here, these darker brown, eight buildings, or we refer to as pinwheels. So I'll focus on the townhouse, townhomes first, and I'll focus on the front-loaded lots. So this is, these units will be attached in clusters of three, or three here, three here, four in this particular situation. And so this, these are some concepts as to what those elevations would be, some quality elevations to downplay the garage as much as possible. These are, these are concepts. There's some other concepts I'll show you here next that comes from Trisidia themselves. There's also alley-loaded homes. So these homes would be townhouses that would face the front door into a grass strip along a public street, but their garage is accessed through an alley. And this is a concept that Trisidia has produced. This is looking from this general location, if I can get my mouse to show back up. We're standing here looking south, just to orient you. So it gives you a sense, off to the left here would be where the community pool would be with the changing room, a pathway corridor that ties the central park, muse park, right through the middle of the neighborhood from Northern Street to the Southern Street. And so a mixture of different lots or homes, townhouse homes attached. You notice in these graphics, there's a zoom in kind of a community activity center, that the units on the ends here are single level, and they are two-story in the middle and then single level on each end. Lots on the ends of these groupings are wider to accommodate a similar-sized home, but a single level, which is part of the theme that we've had within Hazelwood Village that we take care in architectural of how the structure of the neighborhood looks, including the roof lines. The next section to look at would be the alley-loaded homes that, based on these muse, which have been very successful. It took a little bit back in 2000, well during the recession, they didn't move very well at all. But during, since then, they have been very well received and people really enjoy the ambiance, if you will, the setting, the quiet park setting out their front door, enjoy. So this is an artist conceptual rendering of what this particular muse park with homes facing onto it from each side would look like. And that center point there is that central pathway that connects north and south throughout the neighborhood.
Mr. Johnson, how wide is that, how wide is that strip park?
Ooh, that's a great question. If you hold that question a little longer when I get to a preliminary plat, I can tell you exactly how wide that is. So if you don't mind, let's hold that question so I'll get to the right graphic. I think it's, I don't want to guess, but we'll look it up here for you in just a minute. But it's consistent with the width that you see here in these pictures. These are actual developed landscape muse parks within Hazelwood Village to go right down to the core. So maybe zoom clear back to the beginning here. This, these areas I'm talking about, those pictures are like right down through the central park. It's a very inviting spot. We have a little sledding hill down here. You walk through, it's a very inviting walk up to the central pool of location. So we've mimicked the same theme, the same elements into this particular portion of the overall Hazelwood Village umbrella. This is another aerial view as well as a ground view of those muse parks. The other component of this application are pinwheel lots, a little bit unique. You see pinwheel fourplexes around town here and there. By pinwheel, what we mean is the front door of each unit. So there's four sides of the building, but only the front door from one unit is on one side of the building. So each building has its front door on a different side of the building. And so owners, the units themselves are stacked. You live above yourself, don't live above or below someone else, like a traditional fourplex, if you will. It gives you a sense of address, if you will. You have your own front yard of your own, outside your own front door and so forth. And that's what this northerly portion is here of this particular plat, application. Because the designists, it does require it to be on private roads, so we worked with staff and county engineer and the fire department to make sure that we are, we're in compliant with parking regulations, biking regulations, fire lane regulations, and so forth. And we meet all the code requirements there. This graphic actually illustrates, the red dash line is the fire lane. The fire chief has actually already reviewed this exact graphic. And this gives you a lot of the detail. What's a little bit different and unique about this is that these units are not intended to be for rent or for lease. We intend, as part of our effort, to try to hit a price point that would be attainable in a quality neighborhood to people to actually own something that's smaller and apportioned well. But each of these buildings, these pinwheels, much like the townhouses, sit on individual separate lots. And so you can see here the individual lot lines. Let's look at this cluster right here. This is the lot line that goes through the building in two different directions. And each lot has, is, need be, is a flag lot, having public access onto the road frontage, the private road system. And so each individual unit can be owned separately by the residents themselves is our goal. We've got the unique opportunity to help provide a housing type that's attainable. It's not really out there right now. Let's try to, we've seen it successful in other markets, but I think we're probably the first in this concept of actually dividing, condominiumizing. But the condominium process is much more cumbersome on many levels, including the finance side for an actual buyer. Condominiumizing, mortgage is very difficult, cumbersome. We worked with, based upon city staff comments, we actually created three access points up to Lake Hazel sidewalk. Originally just had in one, I can't remember. I think it was this location, but we expanded that to include three different locations. So, anyone with a neighborhood could have access. There'll be a pedestrian access easement through the private street and sidewalk system to get up to Lake Hazel Road. These pinwheels, there's some conceptual elevations that you can see that the front door for this unit right here is on this side. This happens to be the side yard for the other person's front door on this side. This is actually, so this is the side elevation and now this is the front and rear elevation. You can't really tell the difference because of the extent of the architecture, many roof lines, many different materials and so forth. Very attractive. Here's another variation of that. And you have colored rendition that Ted Stapp has shown previously.
Johnson, you have two minutes left.
All right. Here's some actual area photos of projects actually within Meridian, that was just completed. This is called the enclave in Meridian's, behind the DMV supply on Fairview. Very well received. Some, this is very much the style that we are looking to emulate. In fact, we're potentially working with the same architect and builder. And that would bring me to the end. I would normally say I would stand for questions, but I'm going to sit. So.
All right, Mr. Johnson is sitting for questions. Commissioner Lachando or Commissioner Malloy?
Well, did you get an answer to your question on the width?
On the width, I've got a few questions.
Okay. You, you mentioned that these were intended for sale. Does, is that to indicate that the builders or developers are not going to hold these and rent them? That they are going to go onto the market?
Mr. Commissioner, that is correct. That is our intent, is to sell them as individual units, both the townhouse, townhomes themselves, as well as the pinwheels. Those would be, those would be for sale units, each one. We're going to try to find a way to discourage, have to check with the attorneys, but to try to discourage, you know, an investor coming in and buying multiple units.
Right, yeah.
Our target market is an individual buyer that actually occupies the property.
Is, I guess, let me ask that a different way. If, let's say the market, let's say COVID creates another market slump. You're not saying that that would preclude the builder developer from renting them in the meantime until they are sold? Is that correct?
Mr. Commissioner, you're correct, yes. We have to always head and flow with market conditions.
Okay.
And there may be some legal reasons why we, if somebody came in and offered full price for a whole, you know, a whole building of four individually lotted units on it.
Right.
That we may not be able to say no.
Right.
But that's not our target.
And, yeah, and just like in any neighborhood, you can't, you can't control what a buyer then does with their property once they buy it, so.
Any further questions this time?
Nope.
Okay, Commissioner Lachando?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Okay. I have a few questions, Mr. Johnson, in addition to the width of the park.
Yes.
Could you guys actually stop screen sharing? I'm getting.
Sorry, that's my screen. I'm trying to measure this for you. How do I stop screen sharing?
You could just tell, you could just guess for me. Is it 20 feet, 30 feet, 40 feet?
If you don't know me very well, I'm not much of a guesser. Hey, give me, give me 10 seconds here. I will tell you.
There you go, that's okay.
That's fine. It looked like that was, it was an accurate deflection of what the width is on the pictures that you were showing us.
Yeah, so the width of that muse park is two, 56 feet, 52 to 56 feet. I didn't know where you were standing.
That's good size, okay, thank you. And then what are the price ranges for the townhomes and then the price ranges for the pinwheel?
Oh, great question. Our intent is to try to be under 300, because there's a graphic there I didn't spend a lot of time on, but the, we can see, I'm a local guy. I was born and raised here. I'm worried about where my kids will have an opportunity to live. And in truth, at a public hearing not long ago, we had public employees come up to me and say, "I'm aware of this project. We have good-paying jobs, but we can't find a home to purchase. We would be very interested in this type of product." Now, this isn't going to be everybody's meow, but for my kids, who I hope to stay in the valley and have an opportunity to afford something that is theirs, that they have pride of ownership, that can build equity.
So, you're saying that they're all going to be priced under 300?
That's the goal. You know, the cost of construction continues to go up even despite the recession or the pandemic right now. Boise is the number-one market identified by Moody's to recover the quickest, which is good and bad from a cost perspective. But our goal is to be in that 275 to 3, 325 range if we were to get out the door today. By the time we get this, the homes built, which won't be until at least spring of next year, hopefully those numbers can still be true and labor and material costs are still in alignment.
That was my next question. What's the phase, what's the timing of the phasing of this project? Timing of the build-out?
Great question. We, our application includes up to three phases. We actually probably will build the bulk of it in the first phase, which is pretty much the townhouse section. And the pinwheel section with the private streets would become later due to the complexity and a little more detail in terms of engineering, sewer lines, water lines, gas lines, things like that. So, likely two phases. The larger phase, we would hope to be able to pave yet this year before the snow flies. And then the second phase, the pinwheel section would fall shortly thereafter. So, homes would start construction ideally by January, not December, for the townhouses. And so, I would imagine 160 homes is probably a year to 18 months' worth of activity.
And then my last question, at least for now, is, it's my understanding that one of the schools, I believe it's the middle school out there, is at capacity. Is that cause for concern for you? Are you notifying potential buyers of this? Are students going to have to be bused?
Great question. Always concerned, being a local person, and I wish there were other mechanisms to help support the school system, if you will. That there are.
So do we.
Lake Hazel Middle School has a, we're within a walking distance of that half-mile, just up Valley Heights Road. There are three elementary schools, four elementary schools within about a miles, mile and a half radius of this location. I have not spoken with West Davis School District relative to their plans to, where they're going to add their next middle school. Recognize that some people may have to be bused. And so, that, we need information that is given to us from like an agency like the school district. We work to put that information into our marketing materials. So, people are aware, just like well-written covenants relative to, you know, X, Y, and Z, that people have the information at their fingertips.
And then you mentioned that on the fourplexes, that those were individual lots that were divided, so there'll be individual residents pre-standing. Would, so homeowners association fees, would they apply to those properties as well?
Absolutely. So, 106 lots, which includes the pinwheels and the townhouses, would be part of the Hazelwood Village 18 homeowners association. And they would all therefore be participants in the dues. The pinwheel area would have additional assessment, if you will, of dues, because they're on a private road. And so, they would need to have money to maintain that. So, the dues for that particular section will be slightly different or have an additional amount than the townhouse section. They will all, 106 will be able to utilize this community, the muse park, the pathway, the pool and changing room and so forth. It'll actually be a separate HOA than the master HOA, if you will, in part because of the request of the existing residents. Slightly different uses, if you will. Still, all in the same umbrella, the same name of the neighborhood, but two separate associations. They will share a pump system, which is master-designed for everybody.
What are the current residents paying for homeowners association dues that are in the subdivision?
You know, I'm not on the board anymore. I think it is, I want to say in the 750 range, but I easily could be confusing that with somebody.
750 a year, okay, thank you. Yes, sometimes these lower-priced homes that sound attractive then have $300, $400 a month HOA fees attached to them. Then make them not very affordable. What's that?
Yeah, these would be for a year, so.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have for now. We're going to go ahead and take individual testimony. And it looks like if, Jason, if you're ready, we're going to go ahead. And you'll have five minutes every battle. Mr. Johnson at the end of the individual testimonies.
Madam Chair, the first person I'm going to bring in is Mr. Jerry Schaefer. It takes just a second to bring him in and unmuted. Mr. Schaefer, you're with us. Can you hear me?
I can.
We can hear you.
Hello, Mr. Schaefer. Thanks for joining us this evening. You're going to have up to three minutes to provide testimony on this project this evening.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record and then go ahead and provide your testimony.
Did you swear him in? My name is Jerry Edward Schaefer. I live in Hazelwood Village. And who do I need to swear into?
No, 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 you don't. I was just asking.
Okay.
You can just provide your testimony.
Okay. Quick question, and most of it will probably be directed to Tucker. We're kind of curious, here in the subdivision, as to what will happen with the streets and the schools as far as, right now, we have the new developments, as you know, across the street. And then we have the Cory Barton and everything down on South Coal Road, of which it makes it almost impossible to get out of our subdivision at the time now. And it appears that most of this project is going to be looped into the roundabout off of Lake Hazel. I'm just curious, because in years past, and don't get me wrong, I am totally, I am totally on board with moving forward and, and, and building the community. But the road system and the school system right now is, is so overloaded, along with there not being any traffic tickers that's been laid out for counting traffic. Since we received the offshoot that comes from Micron, we have more than doubled, tripled, probably quadrupled the traffic in this area. So, question, I guess, to the board and to Mr. Tucker is, is what are we going to do with this traffic? And when will, when will the streets be widened? And when will we have stoplights to be able to get in and out of the subdivision for access?
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Johnson, would you care to respond?
Madam Chair, do you want to wait for all the testimony? Do you have an opportunity to rebut?
Yeah, we can. We can, we'll just wait. Like, if you could write down the questions.
Yes, that's understood.
Yeah, then you could have Jerry stay on, so he can listen to the.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, great, okay. We're still working out this online thing, too.
Okay.
Okay. So, any, any further testimony you want to provide before the board, before you stand for questions, Mr. Schaefer?
No, that, that would be, that would be the most of it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Or any comments on his question?
No, I can appreciate the concern.
Yeah, okay, Commissioner Lachando?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Jason, and maybe at the end here, you can also weigh in. But I believe that this intersection went out to open house and public comment for design in 2018. And they are, actually ACHD is working on the final design of that intersection. Do you have any updates, by any chance, on that?
Madam Chair, I don't, I have the letter from ACHD and the staff report, which identifies Lake Hazel to be widened from Five Lanes from Eagle Road to Cloverdale in 2024. The intersection of Lake Hazel and Cloverdale to be widened to Five Lanes in 2024. Lake Hazel is listed in the CIP to be widened from Five Lanes to Cloverdale to Maple Grove between 2021 and 2025. And Five Mile is listed in the CIP to be widened to Five Lanes from Lake Hazel to Amity in 2026 and 2030. And the intersection of Lake Hazel and Five Mile is listed in the CIP to be reconstructed between 2021 and 2025.
Okay. So, Mr. Schaefer, what you could do in answer to your question is you can go on ACHD's website and you can put in this intersection and it will pop up all the information that you're asking here, including information that occurred and was gathered during the public comment period, as well as the open house, and then sort of an update on that. So, I don't, I think that's about the best we can do for tonight for you.
Yeah, we've, we've actually tried to do that and they don't, they don't show any type of new widening or construction of the road. I'm just real concerned with, you know, the school being so close and with the kids that walk to school. We have walk lights, traffic, but we do not have the traffic lights or any type of access through the subdivision. And the only concern that I have is that we're just inundating these properties with so much volume that we're not keeping up with the traffic lights and what should be required for safety for children and also for, you know, the residents. It just.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Yeah, we understand. Thank you very much, appreciate that. It's, that's a good concern. It's also a concern of ours as well. Okay, we are going to move on then. We have three minutes for Catalina Pavlovic.
Madam Chair, I don't have her on.
Okay, can we move then to Patricia Clark?
I don't have her on.
Can we move then to?
The next person I have on is John Hastings.
Okay, let's move to John Hastings.
Mr. Hastings, you are with us and unmuted.
Mr. Hastings, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thanks for joining us here this evening. Appreciate your testimony. You'll have up to three minutes. And when you go ahead and start, just give your, give us your name for the record, please.
Yeah, John Hastings. Tucker mentioned our company, Trisidia Homes. We're going to be building the townhomes here in Hazelwood Village, Phase 18. And I just wanted to get on and, I guess, first of all, thank the staff and commissioners for figuring out a way to hold these public hearings in strange times. But our company, Trisidia Homes, we've been one of the home builders building in Hazelwood Village for the last, you know, I did the count the other day. I think it's been nine years, which is, which was hard to believe. But one of the things that, as Tucker and I started talking about this piece closer to Lake Hazel that required a higher density in the development agreement was how do you provide a quality housing type with a higher density that does justice to the existing community of Hazelwood Village and the existing homes there? Tucker showed some pictures. It really has turned out to be a beautiful community as the landscaping matures. And with the hanging baskets and the amenities and the thoughtfulness that's been taken in both the design of the plat but also the parks and the landscaping and things like that. And so, the concern was, what could you do from a higher-density point of view to be able to maintain that? One of the things that, that you can see from the plat is that, that there's a buffer road in between the single-family detached homes in Hazelwood Village and the attached housing for the townhomes. And that gives some buffer to the. And that gives some buffer to the single family detached homes there. And so some care is taken there, but also just in keeping with the muse park design and things like that. I really feel that what Tucker's come up with and what we've been able to discuss is in keeping with the style and kind of the beauty that Hazelwood Village community has. And so our goal is to keep the exteriors and the curb appeal of this housing in line with what you see in Hazelwood Village as well. And so our goal is, like Tucker talked about, to try and achieve a more attainable price point that you can get by, when you have density, but to maintain a really attractive curb appeal and street scene even as things get denser as you get closer to Lake Hazel. And so anyway, I just wanted to to, I guess, log in here and obviously share my support for the project, but also share that I have a real concern for wanting to make sure that this project is in keeping with what we've spent nine years and even longer for Tucker in trying to do in Hazelwood Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Please stand or sit in this case for questions, okay? Any questions, Commissioner Laciando? Any questions, Commissioner Malloy?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony here tonight. Okay, Mr. Johnson, you have
Madam Chair, I actually, I do have Catherine Rexrode that emailed right before the meeting to get on.
Okay.
And so I will go ahead and bring her in.
Can we have her name again? Catherine?
Catherine Rexrode. He's on with us now.
Catherine, is it Cath- Catherine? Catherine, can you hear us?
Kathy is fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Thank you for joining us here this evening. You'll have up to three minutes to provide testimony on the project tonight. And please, when you begin, state your name for the record.
My name is Catherine Rexrode. I live at 11125 Lake Hazel Road, so I am right at the entrance to Hazelwood Village. My concern, or my discussion has been only specifically the driveway that I have that exits onto what will become Shellborne Road. And I have been in discussion with Tucker on that today. Specifically, ACHD has already sent email indicating that it's a circular drive on the southern border of my property onto Shellborne is acceptable. When they are constructing the sidewalk that will go along the southern border of my property, the discussion with Tucker today has been that they will put in the concrete legs of the driveway, of the circular driveway, if you wanna describe it that way. And there would be no fence between those. Basically, the discussion that I've had with Tucker today and that I emailed Diana on, that's a suitable resolution to me on the circular driveway going onto Shellborne Road.
Anything further you'd like to add?
That I'd like to ask?
No, yeah, anything further that you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Will you please stand for questions? Commissioner Laciando, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mrs. Rexrode?
Ms. Rexrode, I just wanna clarify. You have no, the only concern you had has been met to your satisfaction. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, having the having the two access points for a circular driveway onto Shellborne is acceptable. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Okay, now we have anyone else to testify?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Okay, great. All right, we're going to go back then. Mr. Johnson, you'll have up to five minutes for any rebuttal you may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, could I share something again? Share content. The button's not active. I'll try it.
Nope, it's not active, but it should be now.
It is now. Thank you, sir. I'll share my screen. I'll try not to lose you all. Kathy and I have worked together for years and had multiple conversations about this question she just raised. So this is her property here. She currently has access off of Lake Hazel Road directly. But ACHD long term wants her to have access, take access ultimately, especially at funding development, whenever that happens for her property to the south to tie into this street. So in this particular conceptual graphic, we show a driveway here, but to her point, there'd be more of a circular driveway, a leg of the circular driveway here and a leg over at this particular location here. So that, and actually this whole area right here would end up actually being ACHD driveway with the license agreement for the driveway and the landscaping in that, in this particular area. So as Kathy indicated, we resolved that. We worked together very well for years and will continue to do so, I'm sure. Speaking to Mr. Schaefer's concerns, I echo it. Unfortunately, the mechanism that we have as a valley right now and have for many years has been the impact fees that are collected at the time of the building permit. And so oftentimes that means that the funds available for ACHD to widen roads like Lake Hazel to five lanes eventually and add other improvements like lights, signalization and so forth, come lagging behind development. I personally wish there was a mechanism to get a little bit ahead of the curve, but it's the system in which we have. And so ACHD, I know does a great job. As I did, the letter that Jason read from ACHD, there are plans to make improvements to many of the intersections and the roadways in this location. Each of these dwellings will be paying separately impact fees to ACHD, adding to the money that ACHD has to make those improvements. Would I love to see them already having been widened? Absolutely. Part of the design of Hazelwood Village originally was to have multiple locations of ingress and egress. So again, this is our location here. So Almyra is the main access point with this roundabout, which I pointed at the very beginning. There's also exit out here onto also Lake Hazel, the half mile line, which is Valley Heights Road. And over here to Five Mile Road, actually heavily labeled in this graphic here, this internal street ties out to Lake Hazel. It'll utilize the intersection here to get north, south, or west. Neighborhood, as we were building, finally got this street here built, so the sidewalk gave people connectivity, better connectivity to Albertsons and the commercial opportunities around Albertsons that continue to expand. There'll also be, as part of our application, we will be widening or adding a sidewalk along Lake Hazel Road, which will tie into the sidewalks. Sorry, I'm cruising through different graphics here. It will tie into the sidewalk that's being added along the south side at the Zamzous and the expansion of that project, commercial project. So there will be connectivity along Lake Hazel pedestrian wise, as well as the widening of Lake Hazel at some point in time. So on part of Boise's comp plan, the central location of this intersection at Albertsons and the gas station and so forth is to try to create concentric rings of different densities, so people could walk to services and so forth, places of worship. And so it's taken a bit of time for this area to get to that point, but it's, I think it's finally at the cusp of it. But walkability, there actually, there's a pathway that comes right along this Cunningham lateral holy landscape that leads to one of the elementary schools down here. There's a place of worship right here and a elementary school right next to that one. I wish the school system had a better mechanism, just like ACHD, if they had a better mechanism to my kids go to the same schools. I wish class sizes were smaller. The state constitution addresses or has a specific mechanism for how public schools are funded. I know West Ada School District is often ahead, trying to get ahead of the curve relative to bonds and so forth, to new facilities, new schools. I don't have a direct answer for the school situation. I wish as a parent that I, there was a better mechanism.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
My three minutes is probably up, but I would stand for further clarification or questions if you should have any for me, or actually, you know, continue to say.
Commissioner Laciando?
I'm having issues unmuting. Why don't, Commissioner Malloy, why don't you start?
Okay.
Okay. This is not relevant to my approval, but I was just wondering, these pinwheel townhomes, are the living quarters upstairs? Is it garage and access downstairs and living quarters upstairs?
Great question, Commissioner. Let me zoom into that graphic if you will. So the big pinwheels, the difference, one of the main differences between a pinwheel and a townhouse is the pinwheels do not have garages included as part of the structure, as part of keeping the price point down. That's why there's the requirement for parking and we actually exceed the parking requirement from the county code. Because all the townhouses actually have, include an attached garage. I guess there's a scenario where a garage could be detached technically and the code allows that. But the pinwheels would have parking in a shared parking lot in the private road system, whereas the townhouses would have garages that are included.
So then it's, I guess it's living space upstairs and downstairs, because you said you live over yourself.
Correct, correct.
You're just gonna annoy yourself.
I just, well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to know how interested I was in buying one or not. This is more personal edification.
Any other questions?
No.
This is a sample floor plan. This is the main level. It's this way. And there's two bedrooms and a bathroom, a little study area.
Okay. So you need You need $1.2 million for the four pinwheels.
Well, if you're, if you gotta loan this talk.
Hey, we didn't wanna rent them out.
No, other, no, no. I wanna move family in. Yeah, no other, no other questions for me.
All right. Commissioner Laciando?
No, I don't have additional questions. Thank you.
I don't think I have any additional questions, so we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And it's time for the board.
I agree with Mr. Schaefer's concerns about traffic. Sadly, the mechanism is a trailing funding mechanism and things will have to catch up at times. I did appreciate him showing some ability to walk, you know, to and from the schools if kids chose to do that. I like the designs. I think you have met a majority of any objections. You've obviously worked well with one of the neighbors on her driveway issue. I don't, I mean, other than standard growth pains, I don't have any major concerns.
Okay. Commissioner Laciando?
Well, I really like the design. I think, you know, not that you need my opinion on design, but I really think you've done a lot of great work to incorporate it into the neighborhood and I think you're providing that missing middle housing in terms of what we need to be able to get into the market. That being said, and this will become, is no surprise to my fellow commissioners, I have kinda reached just kind of a mental breaking point with less on the growth issue and more on the fact that, as the applicant noted, they started this process with Hazelwood 12 years ago. And the builder who came and testified has been building there for nine years. And all during that time, this development and all the other developments in the area have been in the Boise area of impact and Blueprint Boise. And we and prior boards have been making approvals based on Blueprint Boise. But I just continue to not see any movement from the city of Boise to actually come in and annex. And the problem that I have with that is that we've essentially, all county taxpayers, whether they live in Starr or Tuna or Eagle or Boise or wherever, are then subsidizing essentially urban level of services into these developments. So we're providing actually a pretty high level of policing in this area with a pretty significant, a pretty good response time. And as we continue to grow with no sort of, I guess maybe this is an appropriate term, but light at the end of the tunnel for when and if Boise City might take that over, I just continue to be frustrated because I think it's inappropriate taxation of other county residents. So it's no knock on the development. I think it's a really important development. I think that it's really meeting the goals set out. I think you've worked really hard with the neighbors. But I just find myself this evening, maybe it's because I'm hungry, not able to make a motion to support it this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Laciando. So that leaves me to weigh in. I also really appreciate the design and the price point. The product, I think itself is very nice and really suits the needs of the community. This area has been designated, I forget the exact term, but it is designated as a community something?
Community center.
Community center. And they have, you know, built in Albertsons and some of the stores there to make it walkable for folks. And it is going to be on an intersection that will have public transportation. It will be a public transportation corridor. So I have less heartburn about approving something that we know is going to be built out here in the near future. And again, as a proponent for public transportation, to make sure that these additional subdivisions are close to those corridors is really important for me. I really have heartburn, too, over the services and lack of available schools. And I appreciate both sides, both coins to this problem. It's like the chicken or the egg. If we don't go ahead and approve in these community compacted areas, then ACHD might just keep putting this one on the back burner. And if we, as commissioners, until we can get the bigger picture solved, like Commissioner Laciando is talking about, if we as commissioners can sort of put a circle around the areas that we feel that if we allow growth to occur there, that's really going to push the schools in ACHD to then do what they need to do versus us approving just spotty subdivisions around. So for that reason, I would lean towards approving this tonight, but still completely feel your heartburn on this, Commissioner Laciando. And knowing that we're going into conversations with the new mayor in the city of Boise, particularly around this area, I feel that this particular project shouldn't be penalized. But I think moving forward and we're making great strides in development impact fees for the county and some things that needed to be done a long time ago. But I just don't feel the need to penalize this project here tonight. So that's all I have. So would anyone care to make a motion and then we'll see where it goes?
I will make a motion. I think I've heard from one of our fellow commissioners clearly that she is not comfortable with that. I move to approve application number 20200020, sorry, let me rephrase that. I move to approve application number 20060071.
One more zero. Try again.
Okay. I move to approve
See, it's not so easy.
Based on the finding of facts and conclusion of law in the staff report and the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. I'm going to ask Commissioner Laciando if she'd care to second that?
I'd like to abstain. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and second that. And before we take a vote, I just wanna make sure with staff, we had additional exhibits tonight and I wanna make sure that they're actually read into the record, because I don't believe we read additional records or exhibits into the record tonight. So before we close the, for the evening.
I will add the PowerPoint into the record. I haven't received that copy yet.
Okay.
And the lady said that she had emailed me something. I didn't get it before I came down to this meeting. So I will add those into the record.
Add those to the record. Anything I need to do, Jason? Okay, we're good. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Laciando?
Abstain, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, this evening. Thank you for your patience. All right. Thank you, everyone, this evening. Thank you for your patience with this WebEx that we're all learning how to do and improve every day. Staff, commend all of you. It went very smoothly again. This was good step in the right direction, getting these, getting these through. So thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. We'll go ahead and we will adjourn.